All right, here we go. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Gojkin Central School District, being held on Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty P. M. in the District Administration Building and being livestreamed on U T L.
In the flag of the United States of America, the Republic of Japan, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I need a motion for executive session. We are about the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent to reconvene the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to the employment history of particular persons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Excuse us, we'll be back in a minute. Need a motion to adjourn the meeting? National. Paper.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody, for your patience. Moving on to our next order of business. Do we have any further floor sense? Very good, thank you. All right, then on to our president's report. Again, echoing, I think, last week's meeting, or rather, the entire meeting, just to take congratulations to our students. We've had some excellent shows from our sports teams, um, some more National Honor Society inductions. So, great work, students. Congratulations to all your success and, you know, continue making Gojkin proud, reach out. All right, and next we have our student representative report. Francesca.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, for the high school, the boys' soccer team, uh, made it to final four. They are placed third or fourth in the state. So, big congratulations to them. The girls' team won sanctions. Um, congratulations to them as well. And, um, today, winter sports have started at the high school, so be sure to, you know, start going to practice. Um, at C J, there's not much to update with at this time. Uh, for G I S, students from Miss Gaines' fashion one class at the high school made G I S students' drawings come to life. They made sewings of what G I S students had given them, uh, drawings, monsters, and they were present, and children were happy. At S I S, G I S math class visited the S I S first grade class to review math facts and also read Thanksgiving books. And lastly, it is kind this week at both G I S and S I S. You can find your spirit day schedule on the P T O V, just on Facebook. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Francesca. Moving on to our legislative update, Mr. John Sullivan.
Thank you. Um, if everybody was by, I'm going to give an update next meeting. Uh, we did have an O C P A meeting and we had the new commissioner of mental health. There were some materials that they were going to provide us electronically that I haven't gotten yet, so I'd love to provide those to you guys, but it was a good meeting and, uh, felt informative. I look forward to giving you more detail next time when I have the materials, so, thank you.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. All right, moving on. Any board member committee reports that anybody would like to share?
Just the policy committee, as we'll see tonight. Shortly, you'll be reaching it out. We've been busy for the last Wednesday. Keep moving along. Under the book, and we made some good progresses, uh, as we read shortly.
All right, thank you. Any other reports? All right, very good. Did everybody have the chance to go through the twenty-four policies that were submitted? Some light reading. They were, they were a good hint. All right, very good. Everybody had time to go ahead and look through that. Great. Moving on to our next item, our superintendent's report, Dr. Chris Coates.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Just to piggyback off of Mr. Loftus, to share about our high school National Honor Society, and I'd like to give a very special thank you to Mrs. Vallegas and Mrs. Carcaro for the new format for this year's induction ceremony. If you had an opportunity to attend, one of the first things that they did differently this year was there was almost a gallery walk for each student that had an opportunity to engage in community service and the things that they did to achieve their honors, and they had all done a poster board that were hung as you entered the building. There were refreshments there for people to socialize and to be able to enjoy what the students have produced before going into the formal part of the induction ceremony. And for the, the families and the parents I had to speak with that had had other students that were inducted or other children that had been inducted, they really enjoyed that new format, as did I. I thought they really had done a nice job, and for them, as it being their first time as National Honor Society advisors, they really, really did a nice job at, at changing it up, if you will, and making it new for the newest students. It worked backwards, uh, in my presentation for this evening. So, next weekend, uh, next weekend, next week, before we get into the Thanksgiving recess on the paper calendars and early dismissal. And we will be putting out later this week, uh, codified schedules so that all knows, all know what it looks like, but just to give a foreshadowing of what's to come, because we were able to redo our elementary bus runs. We will begin with early dismissal at ten thirty at the high school, then that will shift down to the middle school at ten forty-five. But we'll be able to simultaneously release both G I S and Scott Schenman at eleven thirty. Make sure that we get a written notification out as we get closer to the end of the week, so everyone has that information in writing. But it will allow us to speed up the dismissal process because we'll be dismissing both of the elementary simultaneously. We're also, uh, getting to that time of the year where we will need to make sure that our emergency notification system is working. As everyone knows, we've gone away from school messenger and gone to the new parent square notification system. For those of you that are Facebook users, you know that in many ways it looks a lot like Facebook. But next week on the twenty-first, we will be, sorry, this week on the twenty-first, we will be doing a test of that system. So, we were going to test the call feature, the text feature, and the email feature, just to make sure that everyone has their settings where they want it to be, that the calls are reaching, because we get some diagnostics when we do send a call out, to make sure that everyone is receiving that. Similarly, we'll be sending out a notification for families on how they can adjust their settings if they're not used to it yet, if they don't want the phone to ring early in the morning, they want to just get a text. We'll make sure that everyone has that in hand, but we'll be doing that later this week as the time is coming quickly, where we'll probably be using that soon. So, the largest portion of the presentation tonight, I'll give Miss Lammerad an opportunity to get set up at the podium if you want. So, as part of our board-approved, uh, budget calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, we are going to take a, a first look at what our rollover budget does and does not look like for the new fiscal year. Just wanted to be transparent that there are very limited assumptions in this budget. There is no additions or eliminations at all for personnel and program. Uh, there are very limited assumptions in terms of revenue, along with many unknowns that Mrs. Lammerad is going to talk about, most specifically as we have been discussing foundation aid. We are awaiting the Rockefeller report for what the recommendations on foundation aid are going to be to the state. And this is, again, just simply taking this year's budget and flipping it forward based upon what we know our contractual obligations to be for the new year. There will be many iterations of this that we go through. There'll be many changes that the board requests to see. There'll be many administrative recommendations that we make moving forward. This is just a very first glance at the budget. And with that, Mrs. Lammerad, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Coates, and good evening. So, let's to reiterate what rollover budget is and second, that is, we begin the budget process, taking the current year's budget and rolling it forward with certain assumptions. This year, we have settled contracts, which is fortunate, so we could project our salaries with the current contracts in place, and that also triples down to our benefits as well. Our health insurance projection is also estimated right now at four percent. That rate should be finalized in January or February. And B O Cs, an estimate of four percent is currently in the budget right now. We do not have our, uh, service request at this moment, but I'm using four percent because just as we have increases in expenditures, so does B O Cs, and they have to pass those costs on to the participating districts. So, again, no additional staff or program changes are included in this projected rollover budget. It truly is a starting point. Um, our special education changes, I have made some because we do have changes in the budget currently this year by U C A F element based in October. And if any needs are no longer needed for twenty-four, twenty-five, I have pulled those out. So, some considerations when doing the budget. Um, I've held the line on all the non-contractual items, which is your supplies and your equipment. Contingency contingencies are built in for increasing population, uh, needs of special needs student with the increasing population. We had fifty-four incoming kindergarten students with needs this year, so we do have to think about what we want to build in, should that occur in the new year as well. Those are not reflected in these numbers yet. We want to continue realizing efficiencies where possible. For example, I went through every line item in the budget in the past few years and looked at the history of these items and tried to break them wherever possible. I'll continue to do that with the help of the administrators as well and the instructors with their budget line items and Dr. Coates and Mr. Carter. Another item that we've tried to do, or another efficiency, we've tried to incorporate purchasing through B O Cs wherever possible if there is an amiable item. So, this would, um, have a cost benefit to us because we would be getting B O Cs aid in the following year for the expenditures paid in the part year. We want to also continue to maintain our fund balance and reserves at appropriate levels, uh, by being fiscally responsible. We also continue to plan for our, our facility needs based upon the five-year, uh, building condition survey and planning for technology, furniture, and equipment replacements as needed due to age of objects. So, here's a look at the projected enrollment. We have history, fine industry of year, fine grade level, and the projections for next year. Truly, there's no crystal ball here. The, uh, projected kindergarten is based on a five-year average. I've looked at the live birth data over the past few years, and it isn't consistent with where we've landed. And I think that that's largely in part to do in part to people moving around since COVID more than they did before. So, right now, that is just a projection, and we will keep an eye on it as we move along in the process. So, our total projected rollover budget at this time comes to ninety-six million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and that's a five-point-four percent increase. Historically, over the last ten years, we've had a three-and-a-half percent increase. And obviously, some years were higher due to debt coming for the folks for the last capital project. That year was seven percent. Some years were as low as two percent, zero even, and, um, it averages out to three-and-a-half percent. But again, this is truly a starting number, and, but I can't emphasize that. I doubt not to be fixing that, so just have this thought. So, unknown items, as I mentioned, especially inclusion items, uh, because of annual reviews, they don't even get finalized before the final budget is adopted. So, we do have to build in contingencies for these items. Our added district placements, right now, I have the current numbers in this rollover budget with an increase based on potential rate increases. Uh, we have graduating students possibly, uh, again, preschool students coming into the district and their services as needed. B O C services, this will change based on final requests and costs. But another thing to recall is that our capital, or their co- capital project costs should start to stabilize after twenty-five, twenty-six, and we do not know what that now will be yet. And once we do, we'll have a better number to show you. Retirements are due to us, uh, from the G T A in January, and that'll be helpful this year because we can plan earlier. And we could see some breakage, and breakage occurs when you have a retiring teacher or staff member and you hire staff at a lesser rate than the retiring was earning. That's what your breakage is considered to be. And health insurance, we should know in January and February what the rates are. And district-wide insurance, this year, we experienced a large increase in our district-wide insurance, which is our nicer coverage for liability, fire, theft, and all of our vehicles. And this was actually after the budget had been developed, so it was difficult. Um, we were fortunate because we didn't receive as high an increase as some of the districts in the area. But I've been keeping an eye on this and speaking with them and hoping that they'll have that number for us sooner than last year. They do anticipate an increase again, uh, but they do not, you know, kind of find that yet, so just kind of keep that in the back of your mind. Projected revenue, now, this is a different area altogether. Um, also, you may notice in the twenty-four, twenty-five total for revenue, it is less than the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And that's because of the appropriated fund balance that we use this year of, uh, I think it was one-point-two million dollars. Um, also, our projected revenue does not have a very large increase here. Right now, it's only three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars or less than half of a percent. And that's because I'm not projecting any state aid at this time because there are just too many unknowns. Until the governor comes out with her budget, we really can't say what that will be, and also based on, um, our, um, study, we don't know what those results are going to be either. So, I left that at zero for now. We do usually have expense revenues. You have your B O C age, transportation aid, and your structural imperials aid increases. And I don't want to refer back, also, access cost aid, but I don't want to make any assumptions at this time until we know more about where we're going to be with that. Our tax living cap, I use the same, um, growth rate because that's not out for the formula yet. And the capital exclusions are also unknown because that number comes from B O Cs for their project. And, uh, right now, we do have a negative capital exclusion in our formula, and that's, we were anticipating that over the past few years when we've been doing presentations. And that's, we were anticipating that over the past few years when we've been doing presentations, so that's not a surprise. So that comes out to just a little bit of 1%. But again, that could change. Growth rate factor could change that. Leading for the capital exclusion number from BOCs will change that, so we're going to fix save it on those numbers. So our revenue, yeah, final CD numbers, potential formula changes, etc., tax levy cap and the interest rates. I do anticipate decrease. We are dropping currently. We were getting five, a little over 5% in the past year back in January, February, March, and we're currently at 4.5%. So I don't know when it's going to be when we finalize this budget. So here are the proposed expenditures. I broke them down by category. Salaries are projected to increase a little over $2.8 million. And again, that's based on the contracts that are settled and that's very helpful when you're building a budget. Benefits, these are based upon the increases in salaries as well as a projection for dental and has. Contract items, the only increase I've projected in this line is for utilities. She anticipated they will go up. I used 5% in this case. BOCs, I used 4% rate and changed the special ed numbers based on our current actual enrollment. I do not project a change in interfund transfers at this time. Those are our transfers to the school lunch program. The special aid fund, which is for the summer school, costs 20% of our special ed members in the summertime. And our capital transfer, I have the capital outlay transferred in there and that's $100,000. And debt service, that's just based on actual debt service and that typically will go down a little bit each year until debt is taken off. And there you can see our total $100,000. And our, our here summary here is $96.8 million with our revenue at $90.9 million. And that actually comes to a shortfall of $5.8 million. If we appropriate the same amount of fund balance by spending 98% of our budget rather than 100%, we can appropriate the same number and have a projected shortfall of $4.6 million. But again, this is just very, very early in the process and it is the first look at where we are in the process. And this is a typical start. Not typical with the state aid numbers, but it's very unknown right now at this time.
Include for me the C V, sir? All right, thank you very much. Moving on then, going right back over to our Assistant Superintendent for Business report. This is Lady Banffalamor.
And put you to sleep, yes. Okay, so tonight we're reporting on the month of October in the, I think it's in the, but first I wanted to go over the tax collection. Did collect 95% of the total tax warrant and this is in line with prior years. The amount has been, the amount of uncollecteds have been turned over to the county and we will receive that in March of 2025. Our internal audit is kicking off this week and the auditors will be here Wednesday and Thursday to begin their risk assessment. Our expenditures for the month of October were $8.5 million. And for revenue, we received $146,000 in lottery aid. Taxes were $33.1 million. Pilots, we did receive quite a bit and we received $811,000 from Legoland, $38,000 from Amy's Kitchen and $63,000 from Brentford. Our interest earnings this month were $222,000. And our total expenses as of October 31st were $19.5 million with revenue at $65.4 million. And these are, numbers are in line with where we've been historically at this point in the game of the budget.
And just a quick question, do we have any update on Medicaid billing for PPS?
So I did talk to State A Planning who was handling our stack reporting, which is where we file our special education costs. So that's what drives the excess cost aid, both private and public excess cost aid. And they are going to begin to make Medicaid billing in the summer, in July. So I did ask for them to put us on the list to start that process since they're already going to be familiar with our systems in place now. Because we just moved to them to do this stacking for us, so I thought it would be a good time to do that. I did go through the report and there are a lot of assumptions in that report. And I spoke about this also with State A Planning to request our BOCs and they are going to help us determine whether or not it will truly be beneficial as a cost benefit analysis to see, will it be viable or not?
And they'd also be able to tell us, do we know how far back, if it is viable, that we're able to go like a little back?
You could, I, I know you can go one year back, but I'm not sure about much further than that because the statute of limitations did change at one point. So and just like the homeless aid and public excess cost aid, you used to be able to go back one, one year. Whereas I don't believe you can go back as far as you used to.
So can you just, what would the cost analysis be? Cost of an employee doing it or someone doing it versus what we get back?
It would be how much time is involved to complete the process. There's a lot of paperwork that must be done. And I don't know if we have enough students here in the district that would make it viable. If it were the, the revenue that you would receive.
And that's if we're an outside company doing it?
They have a flat fee to do it. Some companies will do a forward percentage to.
A percentage of what's taken in? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to our Assistant Superintendent for Strategic Personnel and Technology report, Mr. Jason Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Good evening, everyone. So we have somewhat of a busy week planned by way of professional development this week. So we thought it would be nice to give ourselves and the public a brief update. We had an opportunity today to work with a representative from the Westchester Institute of Human Development regarding the World Pen Scan Go. So this is assistive technology and we also have a second coming up regarding assistive technology. But the World Pen, the Scan Go, that's a little black pen, literally scans across text and offers the ability to go text to speech for us. It do single words, it could do multiple lines of text. So we find it to be a very worthwhile tool for our students and many of our students do have this assistive technology need as per IUP. So we had about 16 teachers, speech and language pathologists attend. It was a virtual training today. It was upward to an hour, so it was a pretty brief training. But it was very beneficial because not only did it help us to become more familiar with it, but also to be able to more troubleshoot if it breaks down. And that's important because this is a tool that allows us to have our students access curriculum. It's really important. Moving on, in the same lines, Google Read and Write is an extension that we utilize through Chrome. So we're actually working with Jaclyn Ellison and her team through Model Schools at BOCs to come in for a half-day training on the 21st. And so this is also very unique in that it's not necessarily a tool in your hand, but an extension that you can utilize, which would also offer your text to speech. It could translate for us. There's a multitude of items that can be highlighted and transferred into notes within a Google document. So for students of all levels, this is an important tool to become familiar with. Again, this is a half-day training. We'll, we'll send about 15 or 16 teachers and speech and language pathologists again, and those are additional teachers, not duplicate. So again, we're very grateful to have that opportunity, especially through Model Schools and Jaclyn and her team always do a wonderful job for us. So both of these trainings are regarding assistive technology. And again, with a rising need for our students and, you know, we are seeing an increase on IUP, very imperative. Last week, Dr. Coats and I actually had a wonderful conversation with our K-8 team, so our administrative team regarding science. So we had a chance to look a little bit more deeply into, of course, some science scores from last school year and also talk a little bit about where we're going with curriculum. And so Dr. Wentworth and Ms. Carmen and also Ms. Driscoll talked to us a little bit about some concerns in looking a little bit more deeply, not just by way of standard, but in some of our supplies, materials and curriculum alignment. And so I'm working with Melanie LaFaro over at OU BOCs. This Thursday, I have a meeting set up with her. And we're hoping to bring in a regional trainer who can really take some of our teams of science teachers, K-8, and help us to, to better align to dive really deeply into our materials that are available. Become very aligned with where we're at with standard and also locate maybe some more needs by way of materials and supplies. So I think knowing what we know based on where we were last year and moving forward, this will be another important step. And so we'll work that out with Melanie LaFaro and move as quickly as possible on that. Of course, this will be in addition to many of things that we've already done. I wanted to mention that Scottstown Avenue, as you know, we have an awareness and an increasing need as well with MTSS, right? So the multi-tiered system of support is very important in providing our students what they need. Most certainly at the tier one level, which would be the classroom level, but moving more into that targeted supplemental area of tier two. And so Ms. Driscoll and a team, a smaller team, will be attending a two-day training at BOCs, actually starting tomorrow, with the goal of becoming a little bit more familiar with tier one and strengthening their approach to providing that tier one intervention in the classroom and then moving into the use of data for those purposes, which then translates to a day two session, mostly covering the, the how, the when and the why, and we move to, to a tier two recommendation. Of course, then at that point, we'll talk a little bit more, I'm sure, in that training about how we provide that targeted supplemental instruction, which again, we see an increasing need and is very important. So we're grateful that we have a team going and we're happy to, to provide that training through BOCs. Finally, as you recall, we've done some work here at this table regarding the Blue Ribbon Commission on graduation measures. And so we had a great opportunity today to meet with our entire cabinet and dive a little more deeply into the Blue Ribbon Commission and the documentation and timeline. We were very pleased with the way that everything had gone. We were able to list out four essential questions and really help everyone in our cabinet, including ourselves, to become even more familiar with those major transformations and those recommendations made by the commission. So after a great conversation, we asked for groups of administrators and cabinet members to approach four of our papers with those essential questions and talk a little bit about what we know, where we think we need to go, how we're prepared to get there and so on and so forth. And so we just wanted to keep you abreast of what we're doing here in the district regarding the, the Blue Ribbon Commission. And that work is ongoing. We haven't heard anything solid yet by way of what will be adopted. So, you know, we are kind of where we were as per our last conversation at this table. But we'll continue to keep our eyes on that and move forward accordingly.
Could you, could you update us a little bit down the road as far as the tier one? And how that, you know, obviously they're looking to change some things and what that looks like and what was it successful? You'll hear a lot about services and the different tiers. It'd be nice for the board to, you know, to just kind of hear the good work and how we're making, how, how the teams are making changes in their buildings. I think that'd be great.
No problem. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much and conclude my report.
All right, thank you. Moving on, I need a motion to approve consent agenda. Shannon, John. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, Board of Education approves consent agenda as presented. Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Need a motion to approve policy updates, second reading, renumbering, renaming, readoptions and retirements. Brett, Shannon. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the second readings, renumbering, renaming, readoptions of the policies as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? Need a motion to approve the opt-in agreement for Orange County Bus Patrol, school bus stop, armed transport programs. Billy, Ashley. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves entering into an agreement with Bus Patrol in Orange County to install and operate an out-facing school bus auto violation monitoring system on district school buses as authorized by section 1174-A and local law number 5 of 2019 and local law number 1 of 2020, enacted by the county legislature of Orange, County of Orange, State of New York. Be further resolved, Board of Education authorize the superintendent of schools to execute the agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to approve minutes. Scott, John. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the minutes of November 4th, 2024 regular meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to accept the recommendations of committee, Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education. Brett, Ashley. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby arranges for the special education programs and services based upon the recommendations made for preschool and school age students with disabilities by the Committee on Preschool Special Education, CPSA, and Committee on Special Education, CSC, during the period October 22nd, 2024, through and including November 12th, 2024, and directs the district to arrange for the provisions of said special education programs and services to such preschool and school age students with disabilities as recommended during such time period by the CPSA and CSC. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to approve the agreement for special education services, suballocation of IDEA 611 and 619 funds. Ashley and John. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education enters into an agreement with the Fred S. Keller School to provide special education services for students and for the district to suballocate IDEA 611 and 619 funds to said providers on a per-student basis for the grant year between July 1st, 2024 and June 30th, 2025. All those in favor? Need a motion for the adoption of district special education plan? John and Ashley. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, Board of Education adopts 2024 to 2027 district special education plan as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to accept 2024, 2025 tax collector report. Scott, Brett. Be resolved, the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District accepts the 2024, 2025 report of the tax collector as presented. And having determined that the tax collector has accounted for the full amount of the tax warrant, directs that the list of the delinquent tax items with the addition of penalty be certified to the office of the county treasurer and/or other tax enforcement officer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to adopt the findings of the investigator. Scott, Billy. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the findings of investigator Melissa Dyson with respect to the complaint filed by employee number 111824. All those in favor?
Aye.
Before we move on, just going to ask around the, after we turn that meeting session. All right, while that's being cast around, will we complete this, any additional signups? All right, very good. And while that's going around, are there any word number issues, comments, concerns that anybody would like to bring up for discussion this evening? Very good. Moving on to our last item, need a motion for executive session. Ashley, Billy. Be resolved, the Board of Education will enter into the executive session if and not to be convened with this portion of the meeting. Discussions related to potential litigation and for discussion related to the importance of three, a personal offense. All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you and have a good night, everybody.